That's the devil's advocate argument, right? The other side of that, of course, is that it's still as a partnership. If you don't have faith in me overseeing those individuals and that, those duties, well, then I shouldn't be in this role. I also feel that if I don't have the faith that you're going to accept my recommendations as we're going through this, then I shouldn't be in this role, right? Because that's that partnership, that's that back and forth that we have, so.
So you do have an issue with the way I'm making the motion?
No, I s- I'm saying that that's the devil's advocate argument. I'm saying that, that, you know, from a, a best practice professional management standpoint, the department heads should not necessarily go through a process with the county board. However, I'm also comfortable with saying, let's move in that direction as well. So, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Well, that's my motion, we'll see if it gets a second, I guess.
I have a motion by Commissioner Olberg.
I'll second it.
It was seconded by Commissioner Johnson.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, let's remember too, that we can always change that policy later on and we can go to exactly what we said here. We're changing it today, we can say no. In a latterly, everything is this person's. The only thing we would select in would be a county administrator.
I feel like, when you're hiring supervisor, department head manager, whatever you want to call it, it's a lot different process than when you're hiring. Right? It's a longer process, or not?
It can be, it can be a longer process. Um, generally, we end up having more than one interview where some of the more line staff, it's usually one.
I mean, the ones I've sat on, we've been interviewed three, four times, so when you get down to the final interview, to introduce the personnel committee to two people doesn't seem like it's that time-consuming or whatever, that's all I'm saying, so.
I'm wondering if the difference is, is are you saying that you just want the personnel committee to be involved in the interview versus having the board approve the hire, or?
Well, I, maybe, maybe that's the difference. I think the personnel always comes forward with a recommendation and I ask, you know, I've asked, I happen to go to meetings with Paul and I'll say, you know, as a partner, whatever. I just think those are important positions and some, sometimes, we had a hiring committee to hire the director of CCT, Paul was on it, you know? That's fine, they've hired somebody. I just think some of those important positions need to have a little more input. And not from the very bottom, but maybe for the last final interviews, or whatever, so.
I'd, my, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, I just want to make sure I'm clear now. Um, so, the board, we're gonna approve every position anyway. I mean, through the consent agenda, or?
No, we're not, no, we're not anymore, we're really not on board with this.
That's, that's the piece that's changing.
That's changing.
That, that, those approvals of those hires, we know all could come here.
Gotcha.
They don't want to wait, which I understand.
No, no, I get that, I, I get that.
The, the point that the board will always continue to approve is the creation of new positions.
Right.
Gotcha.
Or, yes, as part of the budget process. And, and ultimately, the board can say, we want to eliminate positions as well, right? Through, through adjusting the budget.
Legit process.
Yeah.
So like, for example, like the part times, the full times, all those, uh, corrections officer, that would no longer be on the?
Everything that we had on the agenda today would not have been on the agenda.
Right.
Yes.
And then because you? With all of them. Yeah. But I'm not fine if it would have said social service director. I would have liked to have some input from this board.
Beth, would, would you be okay with it if that motion said that direct reports to you, basically, would have a personnel committee interview?
Who are your direct reports?
My direct reports include, I'm gonna, there's a list, so I'll run through it.
Let's hear it.
Uh, so I'm gonna do it by buildings, 'cause I can think of it easiest this way. Um, Sharon, Greg, uh, Barb, McHale, Rob, Cory, Diane, Paul, Tim, Joel, Phil.
Okay.
My direct reports, eleven.
So here's are the, here, here are the ones that are important to me. And for, because they have a biggest, social service director has a big budget. It's important to me. Um, public health has a big budget, important to me. The assessor, maybe, those three are the most important ones that I would think.
Well, and as a reminder?
So it isn't?
In addition to that, those eleven,
Right.
there's an additional one, which is assessor, that, so assessor, auditor.
So land, land record.
I think I may have forgotten Greg, so there's twelve. Uh, I didn't? Okay. Uh, assessor, auditor, treasurer, surveyor, and highway engineer all require board appointment. So no matter what, those still require a resolution by the board to?
Okay, so if we did those and added social service director and public health director?
I think we'll, we'll want to take a look at it as we merge those departments, what does that public health director part look like, but, sure.
Health and human services, public health.
Well, do we wanna, do we wanna pick and choose the, I mean, uh?
Well, I don't really want to, but I'm trying to win an argument here, so I'm trying to give a little.
Paul, what?
Just being honest with you.
Have to be like, a, a certain level of supervisor and higher up.
That's what I'm trying to say.
She's using dollars instead of?
Some of them, some of the, some on the list are gonna be?
Muddled.
I think, I think the direction that we were going, which is those department heads who are, who directly report to me. There's some folks, there's some positions that we've previously seen as department heads who no longer report to the administrator. Parks managers is an example of that, right? The other ones are all the ones that are department heads that were, with the exception of, of Cory's position. Um, all those other ones I would consider department heads to report to me. Those would be the ones that then we would bring forward for board approval and we would have personnel committee involved with.
So what if you said appointed positions and health and human services director? We're put, we're combining those anyway, right? That, that's the biggest, and highway, those are the two biggest budgets.
Highway you said are appointed.
Appointed.
Right, so it's already in there. So if you just add on those two, I would be fine. And county attorney. Oh.
Think the people decide that one?
You do get a vote on that one.
Who, don't I?
So, we need to amend that.
What are, what are we, where are we going? Are we picking?
So, so, Mr. Chair, maybe what I would suggest is seeking input from the other commissioners if what Commissioner Olberg has suggested would be workable for them, which would be the appointed positions plus health and human services director. And if so, then we can amend that, formally amend that motion.
Yeah.
And maybe vote.
Who is that?
That would be good.
Who is appointed?
It is assessor, highway engineer, county engineer, um, surveyor, the, um, auditor, treasurer, veteran service officer.
And those are already included.
Those are already included.
So all we're adding really is health and human services. The rest of them, we'll just, you'll just give us a news thing when you hire someone.
So finance director?
Treasurer.
Is?
Yes, appointed.
It's appointed.
So the treasurer, too.
Yeah, auditor, treasurer, I'll go through it again.
But which department heads aren't then?
Was it aren't? HR, HR, maintenance, IT, land use.
Quite a few.
Um.
How about sex? How about sex?
Yeah.
And public.
Social service, yeah.
A public health can, is?
But, but those are combined, that's included. So the ones that we wouldn't have in here are HR, land use,
Right.
IT, am I missing any? I don't, maintenance, HR, maintenance, land use, IT, yeah, those four.
That seems parks, that seems fair to me. Did I amend the motion now?
Um.
We haven't made the amendment, well, first we have to do the amendment, then we gotta vote on the amendment.
Well, we got a motion and a second.
Do a friendly, you accept it, and then does your second accept it?
What's a friendly?
On the amendment.
I would accept the amended version of Beth's.
Are you giving a friendly amendment? I'm giving the friendly amendment.
You're gonna get a Christmas card.
Can I? Didn't get any from France and I better not hear anybody else here did either.
You didn't get a postcard?
You, do you want a angry amendment now?
So, let's, let's read back the motion, so everybody's clear on what we have.
There you go.
Who wrote it down?
Yeah.
I'm being to approve updating the recruitment and selection policy and promotion transfer and demotion policy, right?
As amended.
As amended that, help me, Andrew.
All appointed positions.
All appointed positions and health and human services. Shall receive.
Shall come before the board. With the input of a personnel committee or whatever.
Uh, I would like that clarified.
What?
The personnel committee involvement.
Well, I mean, it's either gonna, a hiring committee, however you want to say it.
Sure.
Hiring committee, which could be the personnel committee, right?
So we want to use hiring?
Yeah, because that's how we've done it in the past. That's my motion, and you're seconding it?
I'm seconding that one.
Two separate entities.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Olberg. Amended, and a second by Commissioner Johnson.
Any further discussion?
Is this a little too muddled then, or not really, or do you think, I mean, 'cause when you sold me on the argument, 'cause I had the same argument exactly, and I was pretty adamant in terms of that. And his selling point is actually, almost all the other counties are going this way anyway and the personnel is almost a dinosaur because we're not really involved, the day-to-day stuff of all this anyway.
So it's?
I would like to point out, I did not say personnel.
I bet you're hoping he stops talking and?
But, um, Commissioner Chief Olberg, to your point, to your question, to answer your question directly.
Those are my words then. How about that, Claire?
Five of the positions that we've discussed here would have already required board approval. We're adding one more, it's, it's adequate, we, we have not muddled.
All right.
However, you're adding the hiring committee involvement
Yeah.
in that process.
And that involvement can be, we don't have to put on this rap, can be whatever, it can be the, whatever we decide at the time, it can be, we want to be sitting on the final interviews. Whatever this board decides.
Those aren't included then?
These?
Those are appointed.
HR, maintenance?
Assessor, highway, surveyor, auditor, treasurer, VSO, and HHS.
They're, they're appointed.
That's, right, no, I understand that, but we're just adding social services.
That's all we're adding.
Not IT, not HR, not public land use.
No, nothing, just that, that's it.
Boy, am I glad those kids weren't in here for this discussion.
That might have been, we, maybe would have picked their interest.
More interesting.
All right.
Nah, not if you're in high school. I don't think so.
Let's, let's vote on her and see how, where we land.
All right, all those in favor of the new HR policy, please say aye.
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 Opposed.
That was pretty easy, wasn't it, McHale?
You know, I, I just really appreciate that you guys are open to this, it really will help, I think it really will.
Streamline.
Yes, yes, so I very much appreciate, I know this is a big change, so I just really appreciate your consideration for this and being open to, to doing this.
One, you just want to make sure you're not, you're not leaving somebody else, or, you know, I mean, that it's balanced enough and tying the hands.
I still wanted to import, I wanted information for everyone to have access to it from.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, long-term reports are good.
Yeah, and I think that'll be beneficial, so, you know, I can absolutely provide that.
Now we'll see how this helps, we've given you a lot of tools, as former Commissioner Fenwick used to say. Here, you have your toolbox now.
Yep.
Bless his soul, go ahead now and see how we go.
I think that department heads are gonna be very grateful for this as well.
All right, good.
Thank you.
I'm elected.
I did.
I was just trying to read, read any eye contact.
I think I know one vote you didn't get.
All right, next up.
Uh, I have a few items for you today, uh, first and foremost, of course, as I think we're all well aware at this point, today is Boys and Girls County Day, so hopefully everyone's, uh, available to join for the lunch in just over an hour now over at the Legion. Uh, we have two work sessions coming up next week. On Tuesday, we have presentation from folks from Excel Energy to provide information for the board about what's going on with their project and how the public can, uh, provide informa- or provide their comments on it. Uh, and then the next day, on Wednesday next week, we are gonna have the architects in and the construction managers to talk about the, um, facility remodel project and where we're at and some options for how to move forward. Uh.
The times, Tuesday is at eight thirty, regular?
Tuesday's eight thirty and then Wednesday's at nine. Tuesday will be downstairs, Wednesday will be right here.
One thing, I was, do we have the capability of having mics downstairs? Because I did get that in the township meeting, I forgot to mention that. I did get feedback that it was a little hard to hear.
A little quiet?
It was.
Not for me, I didn't give the feedback, but.
Well, here's a part of the issue, ah, never mind.
But if we have that capability Tuesday, or we get a large meeting maybe.
We will see what we can figure out.
Okay, I just, yeah, I thought of it when I mentioned that.
Too many sidebars going on, maybe that's why.
Ooh, sidebar, huh?
One of the concerns I have is if that room does become full, um, which it could. I'm very, I'm anticipating a very large group in there for some reason. It almost feels like we should have had it at the auditorium.
You think it's gonna get that big?
We haven't put out an invite, the only invite that I've been aware of is two town, uh, two township board people. But, I'm, I'm curious how much of this is spreading outward.
That's what I'm wondering.
Well, we still need to manage what we have, it's information, there ain't a decision to be made on that.
And, and the way that we've been talking about it is, it's an opportunity for, for you, the commissioners, to learn about the project. Um, it, it's not really an open house, it's not a public hearing, so. Whether or not.
It's an open meeting.
It, I mean, it's an open meeting, but.
But it hasn't been advertised as?
No, we're, we're not doing any special advertising for it beyond what we normally do to advertise our public meetings.
Okay.
Um.
Which I think there may be need, we may need to have a discussion about the expectations at that meeting and I think that would be up to the chair on how they want to operate, 'cause at work sessions, we'd operate under the same protocol as we would here's if they want to have, um, open comment, it'd be at the beginning, however, it's not just an open forum. It's a learning session for the board and then you could have an invitation out there for the public to come in and give their piece as well.
Yep, that's what I was figuring, we have to have, kinda, depend on, well, not really depend on the crowd, but, uh, we need to have a framework to work off of, just to guide, guide through it. It's not, like you say, it's not a public hearing.
Yep.
It's a work session.
In, information.
It, I did see it advertised on Facebook, so, it's, so. But that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna show up. So, it's been talked about, it's.
Okay. Um, a couple of other things, real quick, uh, also next Wednesday, uh, we are going to celebrate County Appreciation Day. Uh, April is County Government Month, NACO celebrates that every year, and so we're gonna take that opportunity to show some appreciation to our employees. Uh, and with the employee recognition policy that you adopted last year, included in there was, um, a note that employees who, once they celebrate their one-year anniversary, would receive a pin with the county logo on it. We've since adopted the new county logo and we have since received the pins, so we're gonna hand those out next week along with a notebook and a pen that has the new county logo on it, a sweet treat, and a letter from each of you and myself that expresses thanks, so Cory has a copy of that letter. We're gonna ask everyone to sign it today so that we can make copies of it, the package that we provide, so.
Danny was hoping to get to write one.
Oh, yeah. If you would like to write your own letter. Addendum.
Write two hundred and some copies.
Yeah, I know.
Uh.
Monkeying going.
La- next, uh, I sent an email yesterday with, uh, a request from, uh, AMC seeking our feedback on whether or not we wanted to provide some funding for this National Center for Public Lands, they're looking for a thousand dollars from the county for it. Steve, I know you heard a little bit more about this, do you, do you have any more information other than what was shared in that email?
Uh, basically, it's, uh, we received a hundred thou-
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand, and it's given one percent back in, from this WIR. So it's basically, that's what they're asking us for that thousand dollars back to.
So, the, the center's goal is going to be able to, is going to collect information about the value that public lands provide local economies and then present that information to the public. And I believe ultimately it's to help support, um, you know, the value of providing pilt dollars, payment lieu tax dollars from federal government and state government. Um, so, wanted to put that on your radar and see if there was any major concern about us providing tho- those dollars. It doesn't require board action because it's within my spending authority, but I wanted to make sure that there weren't any major concerns.
I have no concerns.
I have none either.
And there, there is a state website if you want to look up the, uh, Department of Revenue, look up Meeker County and it's, we're page forty-seven on the list of, like, for pilt payments and gives a breakdown.
Where's that at?
Department of Revenue website.
Okay. And then the last thing I have is, please make sure you complete your know-before training, um, we?
I think I'm up to date.
Didn't, I think I am.
Uh, if you didn't hear, the Rochester Public Schools had an issue recently that impacted their, um, their ability to connect to the internet and caused significant operational issues.
It's happening, it's, however, it's bad.
The, the biggest risk that we have to our network is all of us, that we click on something, that we download something. Um, I do get reports on, of course, the people who complete the training, people who don't complete their training, and then the people who fail their fishing tests.
Everybody seems to be looking that way. I said?
I'm good.
And then the people who fail their fishing tests.
I never fail those, I pass all the time, I'm so proud.
I will say that, while you are not, you are not alone in never failing.
Oh, okay.
Um. We do have at least one person in the room who has failed.
I'm a mature woman though, I'm seventy-two, so.
So, uh, please make sure you're completing those.
I don't think I've ever failed either.
No, probably not.
How do you know if you failed?
I will tell you.
Do it.
Um, if, uh, please complete them, so if nothing else, I stop getting the emails. Thank you, that concludes my report.
All right.
One question for Wednesday, will we have any information beforehand?
Yes, we should. So, uh, I had a brief meeting with architects yesterday morning where we went over some mechanical question. Uh, and then they're gonna go through in more detail with me on Thursday morning with drawings and, and numbers and the different options that we've discussed, and then, uh, the intent is for them to have deliverables by Friday.
Oh.
You should see it, you should have it for the weekend to take a look at. So, you have some nice weekend reading ahead of you.
All right, who wants to go first? Commissioner, any reports?
I'm ready.
Julie's jumping at the opportunity.
Okay, um, our last committee reports were given on Tuesday, the fourth. The next day, Wednesday, the fifth, at noon, we were invited to join the pizza party out at the highway garage. That was an appreciation lunch, uh, this was for the highway department employees and how this winter just doesn't want to quit. It was so nice visiting with the, the snow removal crew members, we were able to thank them, um, it's an opportunity. This has been quite a battle for twenty-two, twenty-three winter. Um, then I went from talking snow to talking summer voting. We had the aquatic invasive species meeting, that was at two o'clock on Wednesday, the fifth. Uh, the chair of the Biology Department from St. Cloud State University was our guest speaker that day. He informed us of how lakes deal with invasive species, he answered questions from the committee in regard to management options, and Ariana updated us about grants and the budget. Then the next day, Thursday, the sixth, I attended Gary Grunkie's retirement celebration in courthouse community room, that was nice, fun to visit with his family. See the photos and awards of his years of service, we wished him well. Then on Thursday, um, afternoon, I picked up Barb Locke, we took off for Hutchinson and we went shopping and had, no, we did not do that. We, we wanted to, but instead, we attended the three-county University of Minnesota Extension meeting. We are involved with three counties, University of Minnesota Extension, we are partnered with Wright, McLeod, and Meeker. Uh, we share three educators, one is an expert in livestock, one in crops, and one in horticulture. Each educator made a presentation that day about their program, how this three-county partnership is working out. There are county commissioner representatives and community member representatives that serve on this board and we met at the Hutchinson Fairgrounds, so that was kind of our first gathering, that was, that was very nice. It seems to be working well, this three-county partnership. Um, then on Friday, the seventh, I met with the Farm Family of the Year Coordinator and we are in the process of organizing the various award ceremonies that will involve our Meeker County family. Then on Friday, the fourteenth, I attended the retirement celebration for our Becky Howell and there again, a very nice party held in the community room here, it was fun to see her photos and awards over many years of service in law enforcement, that was well done. Then today, now at eleven-thirty, we have lunch with the lead, at the Legion with the Boys and Girls Program. And this Thursday, I will go to the Pioneer Land Library meeting in Wilmer, and that's in the evening. And Andrew informed us of the Tuesday and Wednesday of next week sessions, and there you go, that's my report.
All right, thanks Julie.
Yep.
Beth, you want to go next?
I had a couple of things, uh, I had Prime West, I'm on the Finance Committee there, also as well as the Joint Powers Board. Um, there, there's, they have a hundred and twelve million dollar surplus right now, but they, you know, we've had the new counties coming on, so. I think what would probably be of interest here is, um, they're gonna be putting probably around eight million out to the, sort of, supporting counties, uh, the member counties for community reinvestment. We, uh, talked about min-choice assessments are coming up and there's, there's, you probably know about this. And, um, where they're gonna have to re-determine people's eligibility and it sounds like it's becoming a bit of a nightmare. And did talk about, a little bit about finance, about would some of this community reinvestment, would it be able to go into staffing some of that? And I think the answer may be yes, if, I mean, the jury's still out, but that was kind of the discussion. Um, they mentioned navigators, some people are talking about having navigators coming in and Paul Bookovich is probably aware of this, but there seems to be some federal regulations about that, do you know what I'm talking about, Andrew? That's why I get a little lost in those conversations, but, so, what, what Jim said was be careful about that, so. Um, then we had the regular, uh, Prime West meeting, I'll let Paul address that, I guess I didn't, uh, take many notes on this. Then I had a, um, finance meeting at the hospital, uh, we're down a little bit, not badly, um. We've hired, uh, two, two APPs, we're still in need of people, you know, we're still short-staffed, we're still using too many travelers, um. Physician, gosh, APP, it's a physician's assistant, but that's not the proper word, but. Do you know? I should, see, don't put me on the spot just 'cause I did it to him, that's what it is, so. It's not a doctor, but it's.
Physician assistant.
I might even give an, yeah, physi- but I might have did the initials wrong. And they're still, they're still, um, looking, we had a short, uh, board meeting at the hospital yes, Monday, yesterday. Just went over some financials, we were gonna do medical staff bylaws and rules and we had to postpone that because they weren't ready. We're gonna be doing a strategic planning with the board and some people may, and, so. That's all I had, I had a pretty quiet week. Next.
All right, Beth, Paul, I know you got some.
Other than what Beth, Beth said about Prime, uh, West, uh, they have now got the, uh, oral arguments, uh, date to make in our litigation suit with, uh, DHS, so, that's a positive thing. They're ready, uh, to go with those and it'll be fun to see how that outcome ends up. CCT, I had, uh, as Beth said earlier, I'm on the selection committee for a new executive director. The really positive thing that I saw in general was, we had nine applicants. And nine good applicants for the position, so, um, that, that was nice to see because, you know, every time we go someplace, we hear they don't have any applicants, they don't have any applicants, and here we did. So, we did the interviews for those and we have made a selection, um, and that, uh, individual has accepted the position, so we look forward to getting the new director, Amy Neeland is her name, uh, on board, uh, in about two weeks, she'll be available to us.
And that's because of her retirement, or?
Um, no, actually, uh, she hired on with Prime West, the previous executive director, so, um, we lost it to a, another one of our joint powers. We lost it to a, another one of our joint powers. Uh, stopped at the uh, Fire Department, then we did six interviews, that, five interviews that day, started at eleven o'clock, we got done at six. So on my way back, I stopped at the local fireman's uh, smelt feed, so I'd have an opportunity to thank them for the protection they give to our, our townships and, and our counties, so uh, it was great, great fish fry, too. It was very good fish, very good fish. So, uh, had a CPT personnel meeting the following day. Um, we've decided to add another programmer. So, we are in the recruitment process for another programmer there. That's kind of the, the bulk of that one. The hospital meeting uh, yesterday, uh, really, um, not, Beth said it, it was short. Uh, first quarter reports, um, we were a net of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So, almost a replication of the year before, so.
It's been kinda odd. Our inpatient was down and then, I think a week ago or two weeks ago, Doc- Dr. Deb was hospitalized and it was up to like, she worked seventy-some hours that week. It was, it was really busy, so you just, it's un- it's unpredictable, to say the least, so. And as usual, we don't have enough staff, so.
And the urgent care clinic is really going over very well, very well, so.
We're hoping to get that open on the weekends, as soon as they get. I think they have a PA, I think is the word I should use.
Okay.
What is it, a PA?
Physician.
Thank you, Julie. And, but, so now they can't find a nur- and I thought, well, here we go, but now they also have to have a nurse then. So then, there's the issue there, so, but they are trying to get open Saturday and Sundays. Have you ever noticed when you go to a meeting up there, there's always somebody sitting in the waiting room, waiting to get into urgent care, so. Which takes a load off the ER too, so.
And it worked well.
I know, my daughter worked in central care in Painesville in the hospital for a while, and uh, three hundred and fifty people a day. And registry, you know.
I think Hutchinson has one. There are a lot of people used to go to, so. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Paul.
And then uh, last night I went to the DASO Coquedo School. Tina Shank had given, uh, had sent us all that email. And um, uh, she did a, she was one of four presenters. She did an excellent job with her presentation. It was really, really good. Um, I enjoyed, I didn't, you know, didn't know really what to expect, but I enjoyed the evening. I learned a lot about uh, what's going on uh, with young people and mental health. Um, and uh, it, it was just, you know, I learned about all these legal things with the drugs and so forth. County attorney from Wright County, it was very interesting to listen to because, well, he said the four hundred and one thousand dollars that they confiscated, they use that in their office, and they give to charities, so.
Can you remodel the jail with it?
I think that money is almost.
See where I'm going here, Andrew?
Attitude with that money.
With seizure funds? Yes, there is.
So, but. Anyway, it was uh, it was worth my, worth it, um, to go and to visit. Lamp had a, our little booth over there. Meeker Cares had a booth over there. Uh, Dina was very proud of it because um, it was money that had flown through, uh, one of our grants to get this night. And there were several parents there, and it was nice to um, as I sat and, and visited with some of them, uh, you know, they're there to learn. They wanted to see what they could do differently, and that was nice to see.
Was there a lot of people?
I would say seventy-five, so, you know, and it started at five o'clock, you know, which is kind of a
Yep.
rough time because people are still either at work or just getting home, so. Uh, and the lunch part, very, they had the little taco and a bag, so it was just perfect. Just take the edge off and a bottle of water and, so. Yeah, it was worth it, worth my time, so. That's it for me.
Tacos take the edge off?
I bet we're gonna get a.
I'm getting hungry.
We're gonna get a report.
Alright, Danny.
Yeah, so I had uh.
Parlez-vous français?
Parlez-vous?
We. I had uh, yeah, I had a few uh, uh, meetings uh, before, in uh, end of March. One was uh, alternate for the uh, emergency, and uh, there's not much there for me to recount. Cause there's a lot of acronyms, like you said. So, um, I also had a one watershed, one plan meeting with Mississippi, and we're still in the embryonic stages for the policy, and we just kinda elected uh, you know, a chair and a vice chair. And then I also uh, hosted uh, a couple of the extension educators that uh, Julie alluded to on the farm, and we did a tour of the farm and talked uh, livestock and uh, crops with them, and that's all I have.
Alright. Alright, um. I, Julie mentioned the Iowa Department um, Appreciation Day on the fifth.
How'd that go? I couldn't make it. Were they happy?
The room was full. Nice to visit with the guys.
I had a truck coming in, so I couldn't stay too long, but uh, no, it was a good, good uh, well attended.
Yeah, and Andrew, they had more than a pizza, nobody went hungry, did they?
No.
So.
That was nice. I think it was much appreciated too. My feel from visiting with the guys, it was like, oh, and then it still wasn't over, winter.
They were out there Sunday. I saw them go buy my house, so we're working Sunday.
Uh, then on the eleventh, they had an egg focus group at the fairgrounds. It's uh, kinda put on through uh, Julie Holterstrom and uh, egg leaders, I guess you would call it, from around the county. And just kinda brainstorming, look at different ways to, to bring awareness and advocate for agriculture within the county. Um, so that was uh, uh, well, well attended group too. There was probably twenty-five of us in the room. And then I uh, had Joint Ditch fifteen in Buffalo yesterday for Paul asked me to run down there and attend that. Um, they got a restoration project going in there on, and their landlord wants to do a restoration project and abandon, partial abandonment of a central part of the ditch, which brought quite a bit of discussion. And um, we kinda made the, we, we made the motion that uh, approve it, but we wanted to identify a little more information on um, the elevations and high level marks and also if they'd put in a structure that they can, um, if the, like, for high, a hundred year rain or something like that, they can get rid of the water quicker. Um, there's concern that, being it's in the middle of the ditch system. Uh, Mike Kazmaric said, he goes, we know it's designed with this in mind, but things don't always go as planned, and what's the answer to that? So that was kinda, we had that open discussion on that, so.
Thank you for uh, covering for me on that one, too.
Yeah, no, it was good. I, I, we needed to be in the room on that one, I thought. And my point was, I said, it's all in Wright County. But I said, we don't want a lawsuit at some time later down the road because that will involve Meeker County at that point, so. So, that's where that was. Um, and other than that, I didn't, I haven't, I've had kind of a quiet uh, two weeks here.
Kinda nice ones somewhere that are quiet.
I did, and I, I did, and I just got an email here right now from Britta Tarkelson on MRC. Uh, the Senate Transportation Omnus Bill was pulled from the Senate Finance Agenda today and appears to be at risk. Also, we'll take up their portion of omnus bill tomorrow on the floor, and it will face lengthy debate. Um, both Chair Dibble and Chair Hornstein are asking for grassroots support today and tomorrow. Please consider sending a message to your legislators to reinforce the need for transportation funding. Um.
And AMC sent some information today too with some, some draft language, so if you're so inclined to reach out to legislators, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
So I, I got some clips of actually pulling bills now for political reasons.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
They, they had people on the way down to testify, and they pulled them. And because she was irritated about, I mean, I watched the, I thought this can't be real, and it is, that's what they're doing, so. The, the person's going, I have people on the way here to testify and you pulled these bills. One of them was uh, out west here, you know. Um, a good blind guy, can't think of his name, um.
But. Baker, Dave Baker, or?
He's out by uh, north, well, anyway.
Tori Westrum?
Yeah, Westrum. So you got people on the way to testify and they're pulling the bills out of spite, so I don't know where you go with that. Does it do any good to contact a leg- if your legislator isn't in the majority? I tr- I try, but it doesn't.
Um, and the reason I brought this transportation one up, because um, I know it's here through AMC. The transportation bill was a nine billion dollar bill, and there's about a hundred and seventy-seven million in there for county roads. Which I know it wouldn't get divided evenly, but if it did get that a hundred and seventy-seven for county roads, that'd be about two million if you just divide that out over eighty-seven counties, so I, I'm assuming we probably won't be equitable in that, but it would be something. Um, so. And then CPA, County Program Aid, uh, the number keeps getting tossed around, hasn't changed much now. It's kinda settling on about a hundred million dollar increase.
How much does that amount to?
Four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's significant, for, I mean, increase.
Yeah, increase.
Increase.
Right, right.
So we're at about one point two, right? Yeah, we're about one point two million right now. So about four hundred and fifteen thousand, so it's significant, and, and it's indexed to inflation, is what's in the House bill.
Yeah, there's inflation.
Which is huge.
And other than that, I could talk to you a lot about some of the things going on in St. Paul, but I'll carry out a frustration, so.
Elections have consequences.
With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.